Called the meeting, the regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council, Monday, November 20th, 7:00 PM. All councilors are present. At this time, if you have any electronic devices, phones, cell phones, carrier pigeons, smoke signals, if you'd put them all on mute, please. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Rules of Order. Our meetings are held on, conducted with Robert's Rules of Orders and rules that we adopted at the organizational meeting a week ago today, November 13th. Item four, Adoption of the Minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, October 16th, 2017, regular council meeting.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Was that unanimous or one abstained?
One abstained.
He wasn't there?
I'm sorry.
That was in hearsight.
You're correct. Six in favor, one abstention.
Interesting.
My correction. Item five, City Manager's Report. Manager Cole.
Being Thanksgiving week, City Hall and our transfer station will be closed on Thursday and Friday. Number of holiday events coming up here in Ellsworth. Kudos to the heart of Ellsworth Organization and the Chamber of Commerce for the Second Annual Holiday Marketplace, which has opened up in the former J&amp;V Atlantic Facility. It's going to be open Wednesday through Sunday each week now until December 24th. As you may recall, some of the businesses that participated last year stayed on in downtown Ellsworth, and so we're hopeful for much the same effect this year. The Holiday Parade will be on December 2nd, a Saturday. Starts at 11:00 AM, comes down from Upper Main Street through the Downtown and Upstate Street. On December 10th, Sunday, 9:00 AM, Reefs Across America event will take place. Sheriff Kane is with us today, and I know under the citizens' comments, he's something to say about that. And lastly, the tree lighting of the city's Christmas tree at S.K. Whiting Park will take place at 4:30 PM this Friday on November 24th. So come down and join us. The event happened last year and everyone had a lot of fun, so I imagine it'll be the same this year. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Item six, Committee Reports. This is the annual appointment of the councilors to various city committees by the chairman of the city council. Before we get to that, were there any councilors that attended any committee meetings to report on? Counselor Fortier.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Rec Commission met first Wednesday of the month, talked about end of season projects that we have to do. We have to get the basketball courts, sound curtains down, lock them up for the winter. We prepped the ice skating water system, thanks to help from the Water Department. I went in and insulated multi-layers on the piping system with a heat tape, so hopefully we won't have a freeze-up. And probably at the next city council meeting, I'll be telling you we're skating. Hopefully the weather's going to go. The pad looks exceptionally well grown in, so looking for a good year.
Quick question on that, Counselor. The sound curtains, could we put them up at both courts?
No, sir. The neighbor on the upper court asked us not to for security reasons, and she, I've seen her a couple times, and she, this has been the best summer that she's had since we put the courts there, so the lower court neighbors requested that we put them up, and we did.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep, welcome.
Anyone else?
All with volunteer labor.
Committees for the upcoming year. The Finance Committee, Councilors Beatham, Blanchett, and Hudson. Counselor Moore is the alternate. Human Resources Committee, Counselor Crossway, Counselor Beatham, Counselor Blanchett. The Library Special Collections Committee, Counselor Blanchett. Human Services Committee, Counselor Fortier, Moore, and Hamilton. And Streetlights Committee, Councilors Blanchett, Fortier, and Hudson. Commissions, Recreation Commission, Counselor Hudson and Fortier. Historic Preservation Commission, Counselor Blanchett. Harbor Commission, Counselor Moore and Counselor Hamilton. Ad-hoc Committees, Solid Waste, Counselor Beatham, Counselor Fortier. Public Safety Planning, Counselor Beatham, Counselor Crossway, and Counselor Hamilton. Local Roads Committee, Counselor Beatham, Counselor Blanchett. Parks and Leisure, Counselor Hamilton, Fortier, and Hudson. Appointments, the Business Development Corp., EBDC, Counselor Crossway, and City Manager Cole. The PDC TC, Cable TV Consortium, Counselor Fortier with an alternate of IT Director Jason Ingalls. And lastly, the Frenchman Bay Partners will be Jennifer Fortier and other staff members as needed. Item seven, Citizens' Comments. We make this time available for citizens for comments, questions they might have. We guarantee no action will be taken, but we will allow the time for you to speak. Any comments you want to make, we ask that you come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what's on your mind. Sheriff?
My name is Scott Kane. I'm the sheriff of Hancock County. I live in faraway land known as Brooksville. I'm just here tonight to take just a couple minutes of your time and personally welcome you and invite you to the Reefs Across America caravan that will be coming through Ellsworth for the third year as a start, and it will be on December the 10th. The caravan should arrive around 9 o'clock. They leave Narragoo Gorge High School at 8 o'clock in the morning, and they should be here at about 9 o'clock. The ceremony will start at about 9:15. That gives us time to get them all in and get them all parked and there. I want to personally invite you to be there. This is a great event. I personally have had the opportunity to go with the caravan to Arlington National Cemetery, and it's an incredible experience to do, and we at the Sheriff's Department wholeheartedly support that. So I think you'll see after today, you'll see that on our cruises, we've changed our plates. It has the Reefs Across America logo on it, so to honor that through the end of December. So I extend an invitation to you. We would love to have you there. If you have anybody would like to participate, I may call Chairman Blanchett to see if he would like to speak. I know Counselor Crossway helped us last year with the blessings, and we appreciate that very, very much. City Manager Cole was also there. So we just would like to let you know that we're coming through town. It is a great event. There's a tremendous turnout nationwide for this, and we'd love to see you there. And if there's anything that you have any concerns as a city, as far as the safety and getting them through, the Fire Department always helps us, the Police Department always helps us. It's a caravan will probably have 40 vehicles in it, trailer trucks that once they leave here, we'll, 12 of them will go to Arlington National Cemetery, and the rest of those will go all over the country. So please, if you can, attend. We'd love to see you there, and thank you for Ellsworth for hosting this. They really enjoy it. They're going to be a new event this year. They have, the Worcester's actually have a horse that's a retired caisson horse from Arlington National Cemetery. His name is Peter. It's a beautiful, big, white horse, and he was part of a team that escorted hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of military personnel to their final resting place, and that horse will be here to visit for people. We also have a horse-drawn wagon that will be there to give rides. There'll be refreshments, so like I said, I'd be brief, so I'll start there. But it means a lot to us, and we'd love to see you all there. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just a comment, and if you can't make it, I think it's at TJ's?
TJ Maxx.
If you can't make it into the parking lot, you've never seen anything more impressive than sitting on High Street and watching that caravan go nonstop for 20 minutes. They block everything down and away they go. It's just, you see the impact that this program has on our country.
We, as I said, in 2015, I was fortunate enough to go through with a caravan. There were about 70,000 volunteers there to lay wreaths in that cemetery, and the Maine Sheriff's Association sponsors all the wreaths in Section 24 in Arlington. We fundraise and pay for all the wreaths that cover that section, and in that section is the mast of the main. All of those people that have laid to rest in Section 24 were people that were on the ship when it went down. Some of them have been not identified, and we, as an association, took that on last year, and we're able to do that. And again, I'm not, this isn't a sales pitch, but if you'd like to sponsor a wreath, they're $15. You can go online, or you can contact my office, and Michelle Cody will make sure that you do that. But we had a trailer truck that had 6,000 wreaths on it, and the group of people that came to help us in 20 minutes, we'd emptied that trailer out, and they were out. So it's impressive when you see them here, but when you see 70,000 people and stand up on those hills and look at all of those headstones and look at all of those with a wreath on it, that's pretty impressive, too.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're going to sit through the rest of it?
Hello, Gretchen Wilson, Executive Director of the Ellsworth Chamber of Commerce from the city of Ellsworth. I wanted to add to David Cole's list of wonderful holiday events and follow Sheriff Kane's very solemn event with the Chamber doing a very spirited event on December 15th. We're asking you all to wear your Christmas sweaters, be it the National Ugly Christmas Sweater Day. One of my staff members happened to find on the internet that it is a National Christmas Sweater Day on December 15th. A lot of our businesses tend to take a day where the staff, the banks, the schools, so on and so forth, put on their Christmas sweaters for a day and bring in food or whatever. We decided to try to get the entire city to do it on one day. We actually checked with the Guinness Book of World Records, and there is a record for a one-site event record, which was held in a college gymnasium, but there is no multi-site, multi-venue record. So we actually have applied for it. We have not heard back from the Guinness Book of World Records, but we are going to try for at least the most spirited city of Maine. We have contacted, we are in, we have media partner with Star 97.7, and we are going to put out press releases across the state so that we hope to get Ellsworth on the map with at least the entire city wearing as many wonderful and attractive sweaters as possible on Friday, December 15th. So I ask that the city please put on your holiday attire, whatever that may be, on December 15th. Thank you. Yes?
Just a quick question. Getting back to the committee appointments for a minute, could we make that a committee? I'm thinking Counselor Beatham and Counselor Crossway.
The two humpbacks?
(laughing) I actually saw that after the parade, I believe at the Moore Center, there's a make-your-own-holiday sweater down there. So, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure which community organization is sponsoring that, but you could go right up there and get that made.
Does it involve spray paint?
Could. It could. Whatever you want to do, John.
Some glitter spray?
Glitter, pom-poms, stickers.
Duck tape.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Item number eight, Presentation of Awards. One that is very near and dear to my heart, Small Business Day Proclamation. I've been down that road for many years, and, well, my road ended with the small business in July, but I know there's a lot of others that are out there, and I highly encourage anyone, shop small business. It makes a big difference. So Gretchen, if you and Carol would like to come up, I'll read this and sign this.
The proclamation reads, whereas the government of Ellsworth, Maine celebrates our local small business and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas, small businesses employ 48% of employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. And whereas, 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important. And whereas, 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. And whereas, Ellsworth, Maine supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed a Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Marcus Blanchett, Mayor of Ellsworth, Maine, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Wholeheartedly agree.
City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have another request for a proclamation tonight from you, from the Health Equity Alliance, which formerly known as the East Main AIDS or Down East AIDS Network. December 1st is World AIDS Day, and the group is planning a couple events in Ellsworth, including a human ribbon at Ellsworth High School and a vigil on the Union River. I believe you have a copy of the proclamation, and they very much like that in support of their efforts here on December 1st.
Let me read the proclamation into the record. City of Ellsworth, World AIDS Day Proclamation, December 1st, 2017. Whereas HIV infections and AIDS continues to be a major health concern, with over 1,800 people living with HIV in Maine, more than 1 million in the United States, and an estimated 37 million worldwide. And whereas, the global epidemic of HIV infection and AIDS requires a worldwide effort to increase communication, education, and united action to stop the spread of HIV and AIDS. And whereas, Health Equity Alliance, formerly the Down East AIDS Network, and other HIV/AIDS education and prevention organizations observes December 1st of each year as World AIDS Day to celebrate the progress made in the battle against the epidemic, and brings into focus the remaining changes. And whereas, World AIDS Day provides an opportunity to focus local, state, national, and worldwide attention on HIV and AIDS, and to disseminate the information on how to prevent the spread of HIV. And whereas, in recognition of the fact that the fight against HIV and AIDS will be won by scientific research and by breaking down barriers to effective HIV prevention. Whereas, as part of this World AIDS Day observance, people are encouraged to ensure that policies and programs exist to protect the rights of people, to be informed and educated about the risk of HIV infection, to fight against stigma, and to deliver care for the infected and affected. Now therefore, I, Marcus Blanchett, Mayor of Ellsworth, Maine, on behalf of the Ellsworth City Council, do proclaim December 1st, 2017, as World AIDS Day in the city of Ellsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the group will be very appreciated.
Unfinished business, the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member saw a request, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Items tonight include Council Order Number 111702, Request of the City Treasurer-Tax Collector to Accept Payments on Tax-Aquied Timeshare Units Per the Attached Spreadsheet, and to Authorize the City Manager to Release Said Properties Through Municipal Claim Deeds. Item 10, Council Order Number 111703, Discussion and Action on the Request of the Branch Lake Water Steward to Set the Branch Lake Boat and Aeroplane Sticker Fees at $0 for the calendar year 2018. Are there any councilors that would like either one of these items discussed?
Move the Consent Agenda as read.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 11, Public Hearing and Action on the Following Business Licenses, the VFW 109 419 Main Street for Renewal of a City Class B License Victular Liquor and Amusement and Renewal of a State Bottle Club Registration. Madam Clerk, is everything all set? Is there a motion?
Public hearing.
Thank you.
He's a rookie. Nervous rookie.
This is a public hearing for the application of the VFW. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing no takers, close the public hearing.
Move approve, Ms. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? The Application of Provender LLC Doing Business as Provender, 112th Main Street, for a New City Class C License Victular and Liquor, and a New State Restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4, Mal, Spiritus, and Vinus Liquor License. This is a new application. Is there a representative? Come up to the podium, please, and state your name.
Hello, I'm Darren Goldstein, owner of the new Provender Kitchen and Bar in Ellsworth.
Thank you. This is an application for a liquor license. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
I have a question of the applicant.
Yes, sir.
What's going to be your fare?
This is a contemporary American cuisine, very approachable. We wanted to do something where anybody could come and eat, but a little upscale casual.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Councilors?
Move approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. We're happy to be here.
Good menu.
Item 12, Council Order Number 111704, Request of the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to Waive Foreclosure on the Property Located at 931 Bangor Road, Map 075, Lot 013-000-000.
Good evening. I'm pressing to waive foreclosure at 931 Bangor Road. It came to the city's attention approximately two years ago that the ownership was in question. We've waived foreclosure the last two years while they've been trying to settle the ownership. I spoke with Mr. Piper. The ownership has been resolved. He does, he is here. He has ownership of the property now. However, he is looking to sell the property. He's in hopes of selling it before the December 6th deadline, which is foreclosure day. However, if he does not, he's asking for us to waive foreclosure. If we waive foreclosure, all taxes will be paid in full at the time of closing. I don't know if you have any questions for Mr. Piper or myself.
I have none. Councilors, any questions? Is there a motion?
Ms. Chairman, move to approve the request of Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to waive foreclosure on the property located at 931 Bangor Road, Map 075, Lot 013-000000.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Document number 13.
Have we, one more?
Yes.
Number 13, it has been satisfied, so it has been removed.
Move we remove 13 from the agenda?
Second. All those in favor? Council Order Number, Item 14, Council Order Number 11170- Council Order Number, Item 14, Council Order Number 111706, Request of the IT Systems Administrator to purchase traffic signal software and components.
Magically shows up.
And give them five, four, three, two.
The man behind the curtain.
Good evening. I'm Jason Ingalls, IT Systems Administrator. This year, we've been spending a significant amount of time looking at our signal system throughout the city. Several years ago, around the time I started, '08, '09, the city had originally installed a coordinated system for the signals. The system never was fully implemented. It's never worked completely correctly. Multiple reasons for that. It was based on different technologies. There were a lot of adapters. There were a lot of different connections to make that all work. But it never fully got off the ground. And then around 2013, we had one of the master, On-Street Master Controllers failed, and that was pretty much the nail in the coffin for that system. Since then, we have a hybrid. Part of the system does run coordinated, but it requires me going out to those eight signals on a regular basis and setting the time of the clocks to make sure they're all in sync. So earlier this year, we've been working with, since earlier this year, we've been working with Sabego Technics, who's our traffic engineering firm. They are in the process of and about completed doing a signal inventory and mapping, and it's an inventory and mapping project. So when that's complete, we'll have a complete baseline of what we have in the field. We have most of the data now, and then they're also going to be recommending an ongoing maintenance plan. But one of the things we established early on was we really need to have some kind of a coordinated system that we can manage all 12 signals with. The company we work with is Econolite. The majority of our controllers are Econolite controllers now. We have a few Nas texts, which is a different brand. And if we, we approached Econolite and asked if they could provide us a proposal to give us, that would set us up with their central management system, which is called Sentrax. Sentrax is a fully modernized system. It uses the Internet. It uses standard Ethernet communications, which is what we use for all of our computer networking. In addition to that, over the summer, I've been working to install communications in all of our signals. And we have now communication to all 12 cabinets in Ellsworth, between fiber optic drops and between wireless radios. And the wireless radios are just standard Ethernet radios. So that is in place. So we're ready to install a system like this tomorrow, if we could. This eliminates all of the old communications problems we had before. We had serial radios. We had DSL connections. We had hardwire copper connections running underground between cabinets. And now all of that will be out of the way, and it's a standardized system. Any other important, so other features this will give us, this centralized system, we'll know if there's any faults in the field in real time. It'll send email alerts. Public safety can have access. They can see the camera feeds at signals that have the camera detection cameras. It'll allow our engineering firm to go in at any time from their office in South Portland to make changes or to look at problems that are happening. Saves them a trip from, you know, saves them a trip all the way from South Portland. So it really brings us into the 21st century. We'll have, in my memo, I kind of call this, this is a foundation. You really need, this is the first step towards the future of this whole thing because without this system, we can't build upon this. There's advanced features that we can add to this in the future that will allow us to have coordination that's based on traffic flow. So instead of having flat timing plans, the system can actually adapt on the fly to heavier traffic. So this really sets the stage for, it's step one. It really is. Without this, we can't do any of those advanced functions. So.
Mr. Chair, to put it in the view of a city manager, right now, our economic development in this community is predicated on getting the maximum capacity we can out of our traffic system because we're not going to have the money to build more asphalt, more lanes, that type of thing. Last year, you all funded the new access road up to the high school, which led to the new intersection at Forest Avenue. That's a four-way intersection. Replaced a former T-intersection up to the high school, but it's a whole new game. It's great because it balances traffic between the schools and people can get out of the Dunkin' Donuts. But the reality of it, anytime, you know, you give priority in one direction, you're taking it from another. So we have a reprieve right now because the tourist season is over. But come next summer, once again, we're going to have a lot of traffic going through there. Unless we can connect that new intersection up with the Friend and Friend light and the other lights in the area, we're going to go right back to the problems we've been having. So this is, Jason says, sets a foundation to go from there where we can do a better job of maximizing the system we have and coordinating it, and whether it's Water Street or High Street or out by the high school.
Correct. That's one of the biggest issues we had at the high school intersection when that came online is its proximity to the State Street signal. Those two signals are timed similarly to each other, identically, on the main line, the State Street side. But because they're not coordinated, they don't complement each other. So you may stop at one, and then when you get to the next one, you're stopping again. When you coordinate those, in a perfect world, coordination doesn't work 100% all the time. But they time it so that if you get a green light at State Street, or the Oak Street Friend and Friend signal, you should be getting a green light at the time you reach the high school signal. So that's how coordination works.
Traffic engineers can design algorithms to link all of this up, but they have to talk to each other because it's based on real-time responses and all. So this is the foundation to set groundwork for that.
Counselors? Counselor Fordy.
Question, Jason. In your mind, is this as important a step in our traffic management as virtual servers were to our data network?
Yeah, I mean, this is a no-brainer. We can't really do anything else until this is in place. So we either keep doing what we're doing, which hasn't been working very well, or, you know, move forward with this. This is.
Just a personal note, I'd never done it before. Last week, I brought my father-in-law from a doctor's appointment in Bangor, and I hit GNM Market green. I hit every light through Ellsworth Green. I hit every light in Trenton Green, every light going on the Island Green. And I went and bought a ballerina ticket. Lost.
Worth a shot.
It just never, never happened.
It's amazing how waiting 30 seconds, 45 seconds, something like that, at a light when there's nobody on either side of you. It makes 45 seconds look like a long time.
It does. And one thing about coordination is when a signal is in coordination, it will stay green on the main line regardless of what are on the side streets because that's how coordination works. So what we do when we look at these timing plans are we only run coordination when it's a heavy time. So ideally, on a middle of the night, they're out of coordination, so they will change, and you don't have to wait that full 45 seconds. There's a lot going on with the, in one of these cabinets nowadays.
Counselor Beatham?
This has got a bill of $101,000. And we did eight lights many years ago. They were supposed to be coordinated, and they never got done. If this is the foundation, when are we going to put something on top of it? That's the question. How much is it going to cost? Because I don't want to spend $101,000 and then turn around and not do anything for three or four years and lose that amount of time. And so if I know exactly how much more is got to go on to this before that it's a usable system, it'll help me make my decision a lot better.
So one good thing is the coordinated timings for that, the eight signals, is still around. It still exists. And we can copy that over to the new system and get those working again. Sabego spent a lot of time looking at data this summer to update those plans, to get them current, to our actual current traffic flow. But I've stopped them for now until Jackson Lab opens because I want them looking at that traffic, not what we have right now because it's going to make a big impact on that eight signal loop. So to answer your question, I anticipate putting aside $10,000 to $20,000 next fiscal year to have Sabego develop coordinated plans to implement on this system. So as soon as next year, we can be making good use of this system.
So you're thinking that another $20,000 is going to be what it takes to put this online and make it as efficient as?
The vast majority. It may not develop the, there are many different plans we can develop. And I don't know if it'll be the full subset of winter plans, summer plans, peak plans, you know, lower demand plans. But it'll put in a base level set of timing plans for a year-round operation. I don't know if it'll be enough to do the whole works.
The reason I ask is because if you're going to spend money to put in a system, it's my estimation that you should make it as efficient as possible. And if it's trying to make our roads as efficient possible, then that's what we should be doing. And to know what that cost is going to be so that we can put it in place is a very important thing.
Yep.
Because I don't want to put this in and then it's set there for a period of time and not be used.
Another study that sits on the shelf.
Exactly.
I think one way to look at this is let's squeeze out of our existing system as much as we can or we have to go to things like reconfiguring intersections and more expensive physical improvements. And I think at that 10 or 20 grand, we're talking about that's really that first phase of ringing out the system.
Yeah, that's really what it is. I mean, this is, the day we implant this system, you won't see a lot of changes on the street until we spend that next $10,000 to $20,000 to develop the plans and to tweak the plans that we do already have.
Tell it what to do.
Right, exactly. Then we have to tell it what to do. The other thing to consider with this $101,000, which I recognize is a lot of money, we are getting an upgrade to all of our signals and bringing them all to the same equipment. Right now, we have a mixed mashup of equipment, different brands, different models. And this will have all of the same controller, all of the same conflict monitors in every cabinet. So it's also a hardware refresh as well.
The controller at the Friend and Friend, or the State Street light is different than the controller at the new high school intersection.
Yep.
And I guess one further question, and that's not about that. That's more about $101,000. And it says from TIF funds. Do we actually have that much in TIF funds that are available that I committed? That answers my question.
Any other questions?
I think I'd ask, Mr. Chairman. Jason, this is for 12 intersections? Is that what?
Correct.
The license would cover 25?
Yes, it would.
And we could sell some licenses. How many would you recommend that we hold on to, though?
I would keep two, probably. I know, you know, the, everyone wants a signal at 179. It's not our call, but I wouldn't sell that license anytime soon. Just, I would hang on to that because it would be silly to sell that and try and buy one later. The BACS, the Bangor Area Transportation, whatever it stands for, they have several towns in a system up, yes, they are. They are heavily invested in Econolite as well. ORNO has, we've actually spoken to ORNO, and they're interested. But they're not currently in a position where they can take advantage. They don't have the communications in place. Brewer uses Econolite. I haven't talked to them. They may not be interested. I don't know. But those are options that we have. So.
But you just have to protect for the future, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't sell, definitely wouldn't sell them all. And we can always buy more, but I wouldn't, I'd hang on to a couple, for sure.
Jason, I have one question. I think I know the answer, but, so we can add lights to this, and let's use the 179 or the new 180. We can add lights to this system without an issue, and those two new lights would talk to the other 12?
As long as we build those lights, if we build those lights, that we specify the correct equipment, and we can get communications into the cabinet. That's all that's required. That's what we ran, and that's some of the issues we had with this high school light and the delay getting that online was getting the correct equipment because the correct equipment was not installed. It was in the plans, but it was not installed in the field the way it should have been. That has been taken care of. So that's why it's important to have matching equipment and the correct equipment. So we would just need to be involved in the construction process.
Thank you.
One last question. Is this something that we should incorporate into our city ordinance? Where we, the traffic, do we have a traffic movement ordinance that requires certain levels? It's above the state. I thought we adopted, I don't know whether it was an ordinance or a policy, but planner Michelle Gagnon brought it to us during the redesign of everything, that these are requirements.
I believe it's for entrance permits.
So we'll, I think we should look and see if we can interject this equipment requirement into that as a policy.
Certainly on state highways, DOT has purview in terms of granting traffic movement permits. And I believe whatever work we've done is consistent with that. But I think I read in one place that of our 12 intersections, I believe it was in the Ellsworth American, they noted that our 12 intersections were busier than about anything north of Bangor. So this is a busy, busy hub down here.
On any given summer day, we have around 35,000 vehicles on High Street at a weekday. The peak this summer was the Friday before the 4th of July, at just over 36,000 vehicles.
Toll Bridge.
What is the installation time? How long will it take to install? And related to the warranty, does the warranty begin at the time of the purchase or the time that the installation is completed?
I can't honestly answer your warranty question. I would assume, when I would push for, the date of installation. What I've been told is lead time on controllers is three to four months. So the hardware would be March-ish, but they could install the software right away, within a month or two.
Which is why we're here now, because we're trying to beat the tourist season next year.
And this does have an annual maintenance associated with it, like everything we do, software. It'll be approximately $5,000 annually after the second year. The first two years are included in the purchase.
I see this as somewhat of an economic, part of an economic plan. What we had many times this past summer, where traffic is just backed right up. People aren't going to stop. They can see that small business. They can see that gas station, that burger joint, or whatever it is they're looking for. But because that traffic is backed up, they are in a lot of traffic. To me, we can't do that. It's not fair to the local businesses.
Hence is why we're taking out of the TIF funds instead of general taxation.
Absolutely.
Counselor?
So you said that you would be looking at March, but I thought you said earlier that you were waiting on some traffic assessments, some more traffic surveys to figure out what the Jax Lab traffic, how that flow is going to change things.
So we can install a system beforehand. We just won't, we won't study and look at, we won't implement those timing plans until after. So when we go live with this, we're going to be running on the timing plans we have now.
But it's probably important to note, though, that for you to even try to intelligently coordinate these lights, you need to have common, you know, equipment and such, right? So if you're even going to guess at trying to coordinate State Street and the high school, you know, you need this kind of technology. And you can't be out there in a lift truck every time you're going to get up there and deal with it. This gives you automatic access.
Exactly.
Counselors? Any more discussion? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the request of the IT System Administrator to proceed with a proposal from Econolite to upgrade the city's signal systems and install the Sentrax Advanced Traffic Management System, purchase price of $101,508.10 to come from TIF funds.
Second.
And that would be the Beckwith Hill TIF district.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Do you have your lights?
Thank you, Jason.
Council order number, item 15, council order number 111-707, request of the city manager to extend the Franklin Street parking lot lease agreement.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. In 1992, the city of Ellsworth received funding through the state of Maine, I believe it originated with a bond fund, for, to encourage infrastructure, and the monies were used to build the Franklin Street parking lot, which you're all familiar with, up by the Pocket Park, up on Franklin Street. The city entered into a 25-year lease with the Methodist Church at the time, and it turned out to be a win-win proposition for both parties. The city has a ground lease with the church over the 25-year period, for a dollar a year for 25 years. In turn, the city has gotten that public parking over that period of time, which has particularly been helpful during tourist peaks for overflow parking. And in turn, the church has used it for their Sunday services, funerals, weddings, special events. And from all accounts I've heard, it's worked out pretty well, both parties have been pretty reasonable. The city has maintained it as a public parking facility, done the plowing, the basic maintenance of the facility. Now, the 25-year lease runs out on December 23rd of this year. We've been talking over the last 18 months to the church about whether or not that partnership continues, and if so, what it looks like. For the church, it doesn't really make sense to go into another 25-year agreement. That was driven by the fact the state at the time, you know, if they were going to put that kind of money in, and the city as well, that they needed to see a term that justified, you know, that outlay of money. We've been discussing what improvements might be needed at the parking lot. Public Works Director Wilson has looked it over, he's suggesting that perhaps a one-inch overlay might be appropriate. It's been 25 years since anything's been done over there. There's some curbing and drainage that needs to be worked on. Just a rough estimate, it could be in the $40,000 range, but we need to refine those figures. So what I suggested to Doug Jones, who has been representing the Methodist Church, is why don't we just do a one-year agreement and extend this arrangement, again, for a de minimis amount of money, a dollar or whatever, and go for one more year, and give us time to go through our budget process and determine what, if any, improvements the city's willing to make, and then negotiate a term where the city can get its money back over whatever term, period. I sent to you the original lease agreement, as well as a markup from Doug Jones at the Methodist Church. Ed Berra, our city attorney, has reviewed the lease, he's fine with it. Basically, it'll be filling in the blanks for dates, which will be one year. There could be some, some other small modifications, but we don't anticipate anything material. So, I'm asking tonight if you're in favor of moving forth with such an arrangement, there is a motion that would authorize the manager to negotiate and execute said lease agreement for the Franklin Street parking lot, for a period of approximately one year. I say approximately, because you might want to shave up days, even things up. Basically, consistent with the existing terms and conditions. I say basically, again, it's been 25 years, there could be some wordsmithing, but, again, our attorney is preparing it, he thinks, believes it to be pretty straightforward, and I could also run the final lease agreement by the finance committee if there are any desires to see it, but for our part, this is a one-year extension of a current arrangement, and give both parties time to work it out. Do we have a dollar? I think we can find the dollar.
Can we do have a dollar?
Gary might don't have it.
No, I'm tapped, I'm doing the Y.
Questions?
I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for the Franklin Street parking lot with the, with the United Methodist Church of Ellsworth, for a period of approximately one year, consistent with existing terms and conditions under the current lease agreement dated December 23rd, 1992.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item number 16, council order number 111-708, request of the deputy city manager to reject the bid for the Alexis Way construction project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Moore.
In June of this year, the city council had approved upgrading the Alexis Way and applying a special assessment to the residents of that road for the improvements. Andrew McCullough, an engineer on the project, had estimated the cost, cost to be about $100,000, and that would include the engineering costs, legal fees, as well as the construction costs. Mr. McCullough, he prepared bid documents and submitted to the various local contractors, but we only received one bid back, and it was significantly higher than what was originally budgeted, and the residents would then have to absorb the additional cost. So given these circumstances, I'm requesting to reject this bid, and we go back out to bid in the spring, and we're hopeful that'll be a better bidding environment in the spring, and it will also give additional time for the residents to come up with the funding for this project.
And this has all been explained to the residents?
Yes.
Or they represented them?
To the, to the person that's heading up the...
Who agreed with this strategy, by the way?
Yes.
That it made sense to wait till spring.
Yes.
Questions? Motion.
Move to reject the bid of the Alexis Way construction project.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 17, council order number 111-709, request of the fire chief to dispose of the forestry truck.
Good evening. There's a saying that goes, be careful what you wish for. So, this forestry truck that I came to you approximately two years ago to request as a donation from an individual, has turned into not such a good deal, honestly. We, over those two years, we have been very fortunate not to have a forest fire to need to use it in its capacity, yet this individual that donated it to us thinks we need to use it for many other purposes, which it just is not designed to do. I have received 10 complaint letters from this individual in this timeframe, and frankly, I'm done with it, and I'm requesting permission from you to give it back to him, along with a shelter that he donated for us to put up, to erect, to put it into. 10.
Why'd you wait so long?
That's a good question, I guess, but I don't have a good proper answer for you, Paul.
They came in relatively short order of each other.
They did, yeah.
And I received copies of most of them.
I have a quick question. Was there an initial agreement? That if we didn't use it properly?
He cited, let me find that for you, let me give you the right agreement. He cited, gee, state statute 5653, which talks about gifts of money of property and trust. Basically, it says that an individual can donate an item of monetary value or a piece of equipment for use to a municipality. In nowhere in there that do I read that says we're obligated to give it back, but he did in his initial letter stating that he was giving this to us, requested that if we ever chose not to need it or want it, to give it back to him so that he could re-purpose it in some other way. So I, that's why I'm electing to ask to give it back to him, let him do that.
Counselor Fordy.
Is he going to come get it, and we have to pick it back?
Yes. He, he has specified in his letter that he would send a tow and service to come pick it up.
Let it go.
Yeah.
So liability does.
Mr. Chair, I'd point out in the communications I've seen, there, he's been making suggestions of some modifications to the equipment, or some uses that would require modifications. Or no?
No.
Plow truck in New York City?
No, okay, never mind.
Well, I think what you might be referring to is in one of his latest letters, he's trying to take this one back and want to give us another one for a whole different purpose.
Oh, and that would require some modification.
Totally unacceptable as well.
Yeah.
Is it newer than this one?
No.
And I would note, too, we accepted this when it was turned back from another community to him?
Yes.
Okay, so this would go to another community when we returned it?
Most likely.
Yeah.
Questions? I'll undertake a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the fire chief to dispose of the forestry truck, giving it back to the person who donated it.
Before your second act, can I add one? Could you also add to that, and shelter?
And shelter.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 18, executive session to discuss labor contracts in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6D.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
And, Mr. Chair, could the deputy city manager...